Today is Tuesday, July twelfth, and the time is nine o'clock. The board's in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present, or excuse me, two commissioners present, one's out. Uh, could we get you to introduce yourself for the record, starting over here?
Chris Humble with Ada County Commissioner for Bay.
Sean Ray, Ada County Paramedics.
Josh Rowland, Ada County Operations.
Kim Paul, Treasurer's Office.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Alex Yu, work Prosecutor's Office.
Katie Wiley, Treasurer's Office.
George Ann Bellis, Assessor's Office.
Mike Wirk, Ada County Operations.
Alex Murray, Ada County Operations.
Alan Hanks, Juvenile probation.
Miranda Hansen, Juvenile probation.
Allison Page, Juvenile Services.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
I T guy.
Trent Triple, Clerk's Office.
Bob Wood, Assessor.
Beth Bond, Treasurer.
And we have on the bridge Joe Lombardo and Steve Rutherford. And third commissioner is now here. Okay, um, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, we'll open our meeting this morning with a proclamation. I'd ask Commissioner King to read the proclamation and the record.
I would love to. The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County State of Idaho proclamation to designate the week of July eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, as juvenile probation and parole week. A lot of whereas's are gonna come, here we go. Whereas juvenile probation officers are an essential part of the juvenile justice system. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is proud to recognize the personnel responsible for guiding youth who are under the supervision of Ada County on the courts. And whereas juvenile probation officers follow evidence-based research and best practices to appropriately implement individualized programming and interventions to enhance the effectiveness of juvenile justice practices and help youth develop new skills to avoid recidivism. And whereas juvenile probation officers know best outcomes for youth are a result of embracing families, building relationships, and motivating and supporting youth through positive behavioral change to promote long-term success in the communities that they live. Whereas juvenile probation officers work in partnership with community agencies and stakeholders to provide building and therapeutic programming to youth and families, as well as promote public safety and positive life outcomes. And whereas juvenile probational probation officers advocate for collaboration between the victim, youth, and community to take accountability, repair the harm done, and rebuild relationships in the community to achieve restorative justice. And whereas Ada County is pleased to pay tribute to this group of individuals who maintain the highest standards of professionalism while continuing to make a positive difference in their communities. These these individuals face tremendous challenges working in an essential profession and show up every day to inspire hope for the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ada County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim July eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two as juvenile probation and parole week in Ada County, and encourages all county officials, employees, and residents to join us in honoring these juvenile justice professionals and recognize their commitment. A lot of whereas's.
Yeah, a lot of whereas's, I wanna congratulate our staff as you know. I think they're, you have a tough job, and I think you do a great job, Ash, thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, Allison's been there for what, a year now? About a year, and you hit the ground running. And everybody else is running right alongside. I just really admire everything that you guys are doing out there, really taking a look at how you can turn that program around and not criminalize teenagers and youth, but really show them hope. So I love the direction that you're taking it, and all of your staff being supportive with that direction, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Kingian for reading that. Yes, in short, you had to read all the whereas's. In short, this group of employees does very difficult work, but very important work, and I'm so proud of them. And the language has changed in the proclamation, and you've seen this whole group really just adhere to best practices. They come to to work excited every day and wanna do good things and help youth and inspire hope, and I'm just so proud to work with them.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it's one of the best programs that we have to 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 prevent youth from having a life of crime. To maybe just encourage them to stay out of the out of the system, and I think that's wonderful to do that.
We're all looking forward to the the remodel and the and the improvements to be made with the ARPA funds, and that was an exciting project that we were happy to to be a part of.
As are we, thank you.
All right.
Take a picture.
All right, we can take a picture, yeah.
We'll do a motion. Yeah, we need a motion.
We'll do a motion after we get.
We gotta, we gotta do like.
We have a group coming in, coming for a picture.
For the picture.
Picture, we got more.
We'll show that.
We'll punch us.
Awesome.
It was so cool.
We're so nervous to come in.
We're ready.
We're ready.
I see you, I see you.
It's a big time.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
You're in a place.
I know.
Well, no.
All right, you did very well.
Thank you.
Call, call us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll send you a picture.
You can write your name.
That's perfect.
Everybody, where to stand, Elizabeth?
Um, why not?
Can you stand like right in here?
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, in the back? No, you're good.
Uh, I'm actually welcome to. Let me take you right in. Come on in. We're friends.
We're in great spirit.
Jessica. Jessica. One more second.
Oh, oh, I'm good.
Running.
There.
I understand. I'm touching, sorry. No, you're good. Again, everybody, everybody sees me, I see everybody, one, two, three. Oops, sorry, Roger, cut you off.
Eyes on me.
One, two. Big smiles.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh my God.
Thank you, Treasurer's.
Thank you.
Have a good day, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Good to see everybody.
Uh.
All right.
Well, I accept a motion.
I move to approve the proclamation designating the week of July eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two as juvenile probation and parole week.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving into licenses, I may have a motion on peddler's license.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve six peddler solicitor licenses as listed on the agenda. I'm authorized the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, with the ratification of two catering permits and numerous new catering permits and alcohol licenses, may I have a motion?
I move to approve and ratify the catering permit previously signed by Commissioner Beck, as identified on the agenda, and approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including eight catering permits, three new licenses, and one license transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have our soon-to-be clerk with us. Can you give us a clerk's report?
We're just happy to be here and happy to serve the community. No real updates from the clerk's office. We have quite a few of our departments that are in a down downward trend of the the sign wave of workloads, and so we've had some people on vacations, and it's just been a good summer so far. Congratulations on your completion of BOE.
Thank you.
I'm sure that's a nice thing to have behind you, and Bob's team probably did a great job putting all that together, but we're just happy to be here and happy to be rolling forward stuff.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain the motion on the claims journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated July eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion on the personnel actions?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, but the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished assessor, Mr. McQuaid, and he just completed his last Board of Equalization.
Yes, I just wanna just, before we get to the item on the agenda here, I don't envy you as a Board of Equalization at all. You've got, you've got a lot of people there, the emotions are running high. You have a limited amount of time to, you know, to listen to the testimony and to evaluate the evidence, then you have to make a decision. And I know it is just very, very difficult, and again, I I just don't envy you, and I wanna thank you for for doing such a good job and being willing to step up and do that.
Thank you. I would imagine your people on the other end of the phone, when they when they have to talk to people after the appeal and help settle it, they probably get a lot of angry calls or frustrated people as well.
Yeah, yeah.
If you guys weren't good at settling stuff behind the scenes, we'd still be down there today, I think, deciding these cases.
Yeah, I think it's really important to to say that when we do make a change, it's within that range of values, or there's a whole range of values, and they will not go out of that. If the appellant is asking that they go beyond the range, a lower value, we will hold firm. So they do everything they possibly can to 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 get it settled for everybody involved. You know, we don't like going over to, um, support equalization. You don't want the people that taxpayers want have to come down, so we do everything we possibly can to 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 change those that we can change.
And your staff is always so professional too, and pleasant. People come in, there's, I think I've seen maybe a handful in four years of people that have said anything negative about staff, and that was uncalled for, those those few times, because I've just noticed that no matter if somebody's angry or mad or yelling at them, they just are as pleasant and nice and professional as can be, and that makes all the difference, so. Tell them that we appreciate their help, and Brad did a fabulous job this year as well.
Yeah. Judge Bush came over to me after the hearing and said that he had always been treated very well by the members of of our staff in the assessor's office, and he just really appreciated that, that meant a lot.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we've got another item on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's a home and exemption recovery case, Georgia, do you have to come up? This is, is, and Georgia will give you the specifics.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm sorry, Mr. Reba.
Go ahead.
Um, this is a homestead exemption recovery case that we are actually just asking that we don't pursue the recovery because of a clerical error on Ada County's part. Um, so this is actually for parcel R nine four three seven seven nine zero one nine two. This is for Mr. and Mrs. Clyde. Essentially, what had happened is Land Records was processing a public records request, had ran across this particular couple and realized that they had two parcels that both were receiving an exemption in two thousand and twenty-one as well as two thousand and twenty-two. We were of course able to fix two thousand and twenty-two, which would have meant that we would have had to do a recovery in twenty-one, uh, but realized that this was actually an error on our part, um, for multiple reasons, and so this is why we're asking that we do not pursue the recovery. We have already actually established a letter, um, that was approved by Mr. McQuaid, as well as Claire Tardif, our legal counsel. Um, so we've already sent them some information, letting them know that typically we would request a recovery, but due to the fact that, again, this was a clerical error on Ada County's part, we're asking the Commissioners to waive all fees that are associated with that recovery, meaning recovering the property taxes, as well as interest and late fees that would go along with that.
And the reason we're here is because by statute says if the county assessor determined that an exemption was improperly approved as a result of county error, the county assessor shall present the evidence, facts, to the, um, to the Board of County Commissioners, at which time the board may waive the recovery of the property tax. So since it's our error, uh, we're asking that this all be be waived.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So what exactly was the error?
Uh, so essentially what had happened was, um, Mr. and Mrs. Clyde had submitted a a homestead exemption application. Uh, unfortunately, it did not have a previous address, which would mean that our administrative office should have researched the name, made sure that this particular couple did not have more than one parcel. What we noticed later on was that, um, Miss Clyde actually had a different name on their first parcel, and then it looks like they had married, um, in between that timeframe, and so the new parcel that they were applying on, she had a completely different name, which may or may not have been the reason why we did not catch this until we received the public records request.
And she does not own the other parcel, or she still?
Uh, she does, but it was under a different name, and so there was a name change in between the purchase of the original home um, and the new parcel that they were applying on. And again, the application was not completed, it did not have all of the information that we requested for that homestead exemption. Um, and so, um, we should have done our due diligence to check all names and and as much information as possible, drivers' license, vehicle registration, voter registration. It looks like somewhere in that processing, we may or may not have missed a few steps and did not catch that, um, Mrs. Clyde was actually, uh, the same party on both parcels.
So is this a partial year?
No, uh, they received two exemptions for the full year of two thousand and twenty-one as well as two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and again, we were able to remove it in twenty-two, but we're not able to, uh, remove it for twenty-one, which would have meant we would have had to do the recovery to recoup those property taxes for them receiving both exemptions. But again, because it was, uh, our clerical error, we are wanting to take responsibility in that and and ask that we do not do the recovery for this couple.
So it's it's their responsibility to fill out the application fully and correctly, and they did not do that.
Mm-hmm.
So why is that our error?
Um, them not having a previous address is actually a very common, uh, practice that we see in our applications. Um, so we do try our best to, if there's, uh, an email address or a phone number, some way to contact them, we do try to, uh, contact them in some manner to help fill in the application on missing pieces. Looking at the application, that, uh, clearly did not happen on our end. Um, even though I do see that there is contact information, it looks like the application was simply just marked that it was processed. So that's, at that point, we had added or, uh, granted the second exemption without doing, uh, our full processing.
Again, isn't it the applicant's responsibility?
Yes.
I'm failing to see the Ada County error here.
Um, I, yes.
Sounds like you guys, uh, go beyond, above and beyond most of the time, but again, statutorily, that's not our obligation.
Yes, and and they would have received tax bills, uh, that would have shown the assessed value, as well as them receiving an exemption on both parcels. Uh, so yes, um, Commissioner, it would have been their, it is their responsibility to look at those documents that we send them to make sure that, uh, they are double-checking our work as well. Um, but I believe that it was Mr. McQuaid's decision, because after we had discussed what had happened, um, to, again, accept responsibility for not, essentially not completing our our due diligence and processing the application in the correct manner, um, which is why he would like to request that we don't do the recovery for them for two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may ask you a question. So Georgia, do we follow the typical process as we're working these, um, homestead exemptions? Do we follow every step that we typically do?
Uh, yes, typically, we would process where we would look up a previous address. We would search both names under our property master system to make sure that they did not own any other property in Ada County, as well as, uh, verify, again, driver's license, vehicle registration, voter registration. If there was something that was a little bit more, um, we needed to go in more depth, and at that point, we would also request, uh, tax filing records as well. Um, I do not have all of the information on how this particular application was processed. Um, so it is under the assumption that they did not, the the administration clerk did not complete all of those steps when she processed the application, uh, because we typically would call them and ask for a previous address or an occupancy date, because sometimes that is not filled out. So any missing pieces on that application, we do try to reach out to them and and see if we can fill in those gaps to help assist.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Does this have something to do with they got married, she had still had her maiden name?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
While this was going on?
Yes, sir, yeah. She, uh, I said, uh, originally her name was Kelty Baker. Um, and Travis Clyde were the owners of the first parcel, and now it is Mr. and Mrs. Clyde for the second parcel.
But if you're, if you're getting married and you know you're changing your name, don't you, I mean, I think most women would be more sensitive to the fact that there's gonna be a cascading effect on other legal properties if you're merging a household.
I would agree, I, we do find that a lot of residents, um, sometimes forget about our office when they move to another state or into another home, or, uh, maybe they're being deployed, uh, for military orders. Uh, I, sometimes I find that we're kind of the last department on the list, or maybe not even thought of at all, because you fill out the one-time application, and you, it's kind of one and done. You just, you forget about us after that, because your real estate agent or your, um, your title company, or maybe the assessor's office sent you the one application, you fill it out, you turn it in, and you just simply do not think about us again after that.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I, I think this is really pretty simple, and that is that typically we would have called to verify the information, we did not do that step, and because of that, the homestead exemption was was granted when it shouldn't have been. If you feel that that, uh, is not sufficient to waive the the penalties and the taxes and the and the fees, um, you know, that's certainly up to you, but it's.
We're just trying, I think, Bob, we're just trying to be fair and equitable.
Sure.
Um, and if we did this with with this one, we'd have to do it with everyone, and I'm sure there's been others. In fact, we just saw one yesterday on, uh, that, uh, wanted, um, recoup a homeowner's exemption and argued that, um, a different side of this case, but we basically said no. So I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're not, you know, giving one person, um, more, uh, lenience than than we would anyone else. It's all, we're, that's why we're asking all the questions that we do.
Well, well, the only thing that surprises me is I could be open to waiving any penalty fees, but I'm surprised that it's even an option that they wouldn't have to pay the tax if they technically incurred it.
Yeah, they got an exemption on two parcels, and they didn't qualify.
The statute says at which time the board may waive recovery of the property tax and notify the taxpayer in writing, so it's it's your decision.
Can we table this, and I'd like to just kind of go through the file a little bit, talk to Claire, and and let's just make sure, because again, it's probably not a a lot of money, but it's enough where I think if we make this decision, it sort of sets a precedence moving forward. So I just wanna make sure, because this is the first we're hearing about it, just, you know, double check.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that's a great idea. You know, it's just a chance to dive into a little bit deeper, if you want to consult with Leo.
We're still have a little bit of brain damage from BOE, so. Clear your head next week.
Well, we did have that one case, but but the 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 case that we had yesterday, the the fellow didn't didn't even apply, and and then later applied, and then said he sent, he mailed him, had no evidence at all, that he mailed it in, so there's a difference.
But it came, but what it came down to is you get your tax assessment and the notice, and the homeowner's exemption is on there or it's not, and it's your responsibility as a homeowner to see that and take care of that. So, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to table the tax cancellation, um, and that is, or the homeowner's exemption, sorry, homeowner's exemption recovery case, sorry, county error on parcel R nine four three seven seven nine zero one nine two, um, to give the board a little bit of an opportunity to go through it a little bit deeper than we have today.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Uh, I will second that, but, uh, I do need to state on the record that I will recuse myself from a final vote on this matter.
Okay. All right, I'll favor the motion, say aye, aye?
Okay. We need a table date. Oh, yeah. Next Tuesday? Next Tuesday, that's fine, sure. That's July nineteenth? Perfect. To July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, do you still second the motion?
Second.
Okay. Excuse me. Uh, you, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thorough, good job, we're just, like I said.
Yeah.
Recovering from BOE, so.
All right, we have a casualty loss, uh, may I have a motion on the casualty loss?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the one casualty loss, as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board. I forgot, was this a fire, or what was this? I think it was a fire, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us today our distinguished treasurer. Yeah, you have report course, and I, we have financial report, we have too.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We'll start with, um, the tax deed auction. Um, so before you for consideration are the minimum bids for the auction of real property that the county acquired by tax deed. Um, so these minimum bids include taxes, costs, um, and interest. Um, I I will just note, so these are the minimum bids, and then should the property sell for a higher amount and there's excess proceeds, there is a claims process where parties in interest, lien holders can submit, um, a claim to those proceeds, and then any excess proceeds after that would return to the owner at the time we acquired the property by tax deed. Um, so I just note that this is not a a profit center.
Right, right.
It's just recovery of of taxes, costs, and interest. So, um, that's what's before you for consideration, are those minimum bids.
Okay, all right.
And again, that includes taxes, what's all, what is included. And again, that includes taxes, what's all, what is included in these taxes?
Yes, um, Commissioner, it's taxes, late charge, interests. Um, some costs related to it, so that could be publication costs, um, cost of the litigation guarantee where we identify parties and interests. So costs associated with the process.
Okay, but not costs associated with our staff time.
Um, Commissioner, let me defer to Katie on that. No, no staff time.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that something we should consider in the future?
Mr. Chairman, I'd have to look at the statute.
Okay.
Um, which costs are, if that could be included.
Okay.
Cause I know it's mailing, I'm just not sure if it's staff time.
May not be enough staff time to be worthwhile pursuing, but maybe it is. I don't know how much staff time goes into one of these. It's significant problem we're pursuing.
I could look into that.
All right, do we have motion?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, move to accept the recommendations of the treasurer's office and authorize direct the treasurer to offer the parcels identified on the agenda at a public auction at the proposed minimum bid amounts listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, now, we have your treasurer's report for the month of June.
My name is Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Yes.
Uh, just a few updates for the June investment portfolio. We, we did have one maturity in June, two point five million. It's a federal home loan bank, which is an agency bond. And we did make one new purchase in June, which was another federal home loan bank, uh, agency bond for four point five million. Um, we had no reconciling items this month, no carryover, end of the month type things. Uh, one thing uh I wanna point out is the uh rates, there's been a lot of talk of rates. We're seeing the the Fed been raising rates recently and pretty significantly. Uh, last month, uh CPI data is coming out tomorrow morning, I think it's six thirty mountain time. And uh that's expected to be pretty hot again. And so when the Fed meets at the end of the month, I think uh their meeting is July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, we can see another big uh interest rate hike by them. And just to kind of highlight, in fact, I see you have that that blue chart there, so that's a good one to look at. Our L-Gip, if you look at the column, it's uh, I think it's about the fifth one over there, L-Gip. You can see uh the interest it's paid, you know, from month to month. You see one kind of spike in February, that's due to the collections periods that we get uh from the December collections, cause that money builds up. It moves into our L-Gip account and there's a significant amount of money there, so if you just kind of uh overlook the forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollar interest there as a anomaly because of the big flow of cash into it, and if you look at the last two months, May and June, you see a huge uh difference. Now, one thing I I should point out here is the L-Gips, and when we report this each month, and if you went to the very first page, the very top line item shows that L-Gip, uh, the market value, a hundred seventy-four million, almost a hundred seventy-five million, so we have a lot of money sitting in that account right now. Uh, the yield to maturity on the far right, that tells us what our current month yield is. And uh, this is actually in a rear, so this point six-three-two is May. Uh, May's yield to maturity. In fact, this morning, I've been watching the state treasurer's website to see when the statement's gonna come out. Normally, it's the fifth business day of the month, and it hasn't been there this month, I think because, probably because of their fiscal year end. This morning, when I first came in, it was not there because I wanna see what the yield was, how much it's moved in this month with the the Fed hiking rates. Uh, just prior to this meeting, it was on there, so I was able to jot that down and I jotted it down. So the actual amount for for June was point eight-three-one. So you can see that's a significant increase from point six to three-two to point eight-nine-three-one. So next month, when we do actually show on that blue chart, uh, we should see a big, big jump up with a hundred seventy-five million dollars in there, we'll see a big jump up in yield. So, uh, on one hand, the 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 Fed hiking rates can hurt our market values of our investments, cause any existing bond's gonna go down in value when that happens. However, we're getting higher interest payments each month, and you can see that there, it's kind of illustrated there, so I just kind of wanted to.
We have a maturity too in September, two million, don't we?
Um, let me take a look at that, cause I can't.
So that'll give us another opportunity.
Yeah, we're getting about a million dollars each month.
It's about twenty-two, twenty-two.
And I do see that, yeah, September, we're gonna have two million there. Uh, the sheet just prior to that, you haven't seen this in a while, and I know it's pretty small and kind of hard to read, but this is our calendar year twenty-three potential calls. The call worksheet I haven't been having to present because we haven't had any callable bonds. But we just purchased a callable bond last month, and another one's coming up this month, and so that's why this sheet is back in here. So a callable bond is a little different from what they call bullet bonds. Bullet bond, if you if you buy it and it has a five-year maturity, it will definitely not mature or get called before that time period, so you know it's gonna go all the way to that five-year term. The callables, we hadn't been purchasing them, but uh now they are starting to present a pretty significant difference in the yield over treasuries. And and that's why this purchase was made. It it is potentially callable in April of twenty twenty-three. Uh, but even if it is called, the yield to maturity, what they call the yield to worst from the first call was uh still pretty impressive. I think it was like maybe over four percent, which is a lot higher. So that's why this sheet's back on there. So there there's been a few changes and we kind of modify the investment strategy based on what the Fed does. Um.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So on our percentage um of L-Gip, that's getting up there, it's up at sixty-one point eight-eight. In our advi- our revised policy, what's the maximum amount we can have in there?
We don't have a a maximum on the L-Gip any longer in the new investment policy.
Okay, so.
We're, you know, we're we're looking right now because we're kind of coming up on our two-year uh timeframe since the investment policy was reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that was September of twenty twenty. So uh we're gonna review that. In fact, we've already started that process and we'll meet with the board and talk about that with RBK. They're scheduled to come in uh sometime at the end of this month. I think we made a modification, we're trying to get a new date, so we we gotta pin that down, we have that later in the month. Uh, other than that, I think those are the the major changes. Um, do you have any other questions?
Any questions?
Just look forward to meeting with them again, reviewing some of these balances with them too.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. Okay. Anything else, Beth?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Good report. Okay. Moving on, we have uh twenty commercial exhibitor agreements. Is there any discussion?
Oh, I don't know, we've got pure romance right next to grumpy bears. That probably warrants some comment from somebody. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the twenty commercial exhibitor agreements for the twenty twenty-two Western Idaho Fair as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Thank you. Uh, you've heard the motion, uh, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we had the Barbara Park Education and Event Center. Uh, do we have a motion for the uh uh agreements? There's three.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the three Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the uh motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we'll now take up agreements. Is there any discussion on the agreements?
No, I've read through those uh agreements and I'm I'm ready to make a motion to approve the aid agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye? Aye?
Aye.
Finally, we'll now take up a motion for reconsideration. This is a motion to reconsideration project number two zero two one zero three zero four eight A. It's an appeal of the planning and zoning project, uh, conditional use permit. Is there any discussion on that motion or on that?
Ax, this is Hill, right? Is this the, this isn't, which one is this one?
This is the uh cell tower.
Okay, yeah.
The one that they didn't look at the tower.
Right, and.
That's the cell tower, yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna have a look at that and give the evidence.
I'm open to reconsideration for this. I think that we gave them some direction and so we should probably have them have the ability to come back before the board with the new evidence.
Okay.
If they have any.
So that is a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to grant vertical bridges motion for reconsideration for project number two zero two one zero three zero four eight dash A and direct development services to set the matter for public hearing consistent with our decision.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Words in recess. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Hill's consent and consideration on for next weekend?
You're off the record.
Okay, good morning. Uh, today is Tuesday, the uh July twelfth. Time is uh nine thirty-eight. Uh, the Board of Commissioners sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us are.
Sean Rainey, Ada County Paramedics.
And we have some guests.
Uh, Brad Fowler with Abomor Development.
Dan Richter, Abomor.
Jeff Bauer, Givens Bruceley.
And IT guy, thank you. Welcome to our, welcome to our meeting today. Uh, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
We have one resolution this morning, uh, resolution number two seven six five adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the received unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Emergency Medical Services budget. Uh, I'll open a public hearing on resolution number two seven six five.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. This uh is actually um some work that Chief Shabbat did with the Healthcare Coalition. This is a joint purchase of uh Sim- Simulation Mannequin. And so the money is actually coming from the Healthcare Coalition, so.
What's that now?
I do not recall exactly what the.
Millions and millions?
It's not millions and millions.
But it's some.
It's some.
Okay.
All right, do we have any further discussion on the on the resolution? I will then close the public hearing on resolution number two seven six five. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution two seven six five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion on the claims journal?
Uh, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated July eighth, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, uh, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on personnel actions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as listed on the agenda and the summer sheet showing me on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second. You've heard the motion, uh, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have a a motion on the approval of the minutes?
I move to uh approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have two agreements uh before us today. Uh, is there any discussion or any uh issues with the agreements?
No, it looks like they're for the standard uniform rental service agreement, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Secondly, you've heard the motion, uh, I'll favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we get any mess up here. Welcome back.
Thank you.
We heard you went on vacation but didn't go on vacation.
Correct. I did a lot of work. I was on my tractor for many hours. And it was good, it was therapeutic.
Okay.
All good.
Got a lot done. Uh, so I'll start off with COVID. Uh, yesterday, uh Cameo spoke with St. Al's. They are um full capacity right now. In fact, they're boarding patients, double-digit numbers in the in the emergency department. Uh, yesterday, we were seeing wait times to actually put a patient on a bed around twenty to twenty-five minutes after we arrive at the hospital. Um, some of it's due to COVID, a lot of it um is due to COVID and staffing. So St. Al's currently has seventy of their staff out with COVID. Uh, we're seeing smaller numbers. We have uh currently five people out with COVID. Uh, that's a mixture of administrative staff and field staff, but, and we've seen that number kind of fluctuate between two and five for about the last three to four weeks. Um, you know, nationally, when you look at this BA five variant, which is the dominant variant in the country right now, um, it is uh causing a lot of infection. I think they're having a hard time ga- getting their arms around, you know, I heard a hundred-plus-thousand cases nationally. Uh, but if you think about uh the federal government uh issued out, or you could go on and order eight free tests, and so if you do a home test, you may not call your health district and say, hey, I was COVID positive. Um, a lot of people probably don't do that. And so uh knowing what those true numbers are, I think is gonna be difficult from this point forward with COVID. You know, we uh, as far as our field per- uh uh providers go, nothing's really changed. You know, we still are leaving it up to provider discretion as to how they uh going with their PPE, much like we have done for the past thirty years, instead of saying you have to wear full PPE on every call. Uh, we've learned a lot and and can be careful, so um so far, we have still have not seen a patient to provider transmission of COVID. So uh that's COVID, you know, we'll keep a close eye on things. Uh, I know.
Has your average daily haul changed much?
We have gone from a low right around two point three in April, and that was kind of the lowest that we've ever been since COVID started. And now we're up at four and three-quarters, so and it and it seems like it's just gonna trend a little bit higher. Um, this variant here in the United States and certainly in Idaho, doesn't seem like it's causing as much severe illness or hospitalization. But when you look at other countries, uh Portugal has very high vaccination rates, but they're seeing more severe disease and hospitalization with the BA five variant. But then when you look at South Africa, they're seeing high rates of infection but not as severe illness, so.
Yes.
Why?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's hard to say, but we'll uh we'll continue to monitor that. Cameo, Aikens, uh, uh, it sounds like the the state right now is still only doing one mock call where they, all the hospitals and the state meet. They're only doing that once a week, but I suspect if if trends continue, that they'll probably ramp that back up. I did hear one report this morning that uh they think the peak may have already come for Ada County. If you remember, we've been in that moderate or or high-risk category for probably about a month now. Uh, and Canyon County is still in the moderate range, so um but but I think that still remains to be seen as to whether we peaked here or not.
Sean, what's, is it still five days required uh for recommended or it's required five days?
Yeah, five days for non-healthcare providers, and then for healthcare providers, which we fall under that category. Um, it's, they they have it at seven, but what we found is that people don't have a negative test until around day ten. So, um, we, once we get to day five, we start testing people to see if they change over to negative, because then at day seven, they can come back to work. Um.
So most of the, uh, our folks are out for eight to ten days.
Yeah.
Probably that's what's going on at the hospitals too.
And I I uh, yeah, exactly. Uh, you know, seventy, seventy staff at St. Al's, it's not really a space problem, it's a staff problem they've got. Uh, we are keeping a close eye, and I hate to talk about another disease, but monkeypox. Um, we heard yesterday that there is actually community transmission in Oregon. I don't know exactly where in Oregon. Uh, we do not have that here yet that we know of. Uh, but we'll keep a close eye on it. Doesn't seem like it's near as uh transmissible as COVID has been, thank goodness. Uh, but it can be transmitted through droplets, so um it's not just, you know, close contact and touching skin lesions. It can actually be transmitted by droplets, so uh we're we're doing our due diligence and researching that and looking. Uh, we're, we're doing our due diligence and researching that and looking at. We learned a lot during COVID and we know that we can decon our ambulances with a fogging spray that lays down a, a. A chemical protectant that actually protects a service or surface for up to six months. Um, we'll just have to make sure that that's adequate for monkeypox if we transport a patient and decon the ambulance the same way.
Let us know if you come into contact with any.
Yeah, we will. Certainly, if we see a monkeypox case, we'll let you know, but um, that's really uh all I have for you today.
Alright.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's good to be back.
Had some good tractor fun?
Yep, it was fun. Moved a lot of horse manure, which is always fun.
I know the feeling. Okay, we'll uh, we'll be, we'll be in recess. Thank. Good morning. Uh, today's Tuesday, July twelfth. The time is uh nine forty-eight. The Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Avamore Community Infrastructure District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All, all three commissioners are present. Also with us are Brad Fandler with Avamore Development.
Dan Richter, Avamore.
Jeff Bauer, Givens Persley.
Adam Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
An IT guy. Thank you. Alright, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
Yes, Mister Chair, move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated July eighth twenty twenty-two regarding Avamore CID expenditures.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye? I may have a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. We have a discussion on some environmental issues.
Yeah, Mister Chair, just a couple of things. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of time, but just a kind of a brief overview on the EPA. You know, if everybody read the paper, the EPA violation, so we thought we just needed to check in to make sure that everything's okay and it didn't impact us. But also, if you could give us a quick update on the Eagle annexation process and then where you're at on the CID expansion that we had talked about. So I know you were gonna look, doing the CID first, then the annexation, but it looks like that's going the other way around, so.
Well, it's still not kind of fully developed yet, but to give you an idea on the annexation. Uh, annexation is going well. We've submitted our application. It's not been fully vetted yet by staff, but it should be any day now. Um, we anticipate, hopefully, if we're successful, it'll be done sometime this fall. Actually, the EPA violation is kind of all, if somebody that uh. We had, any PAA violations or inspections and some violations happen to hundreds every year in, in Idaho. That are imposed and most of them are five to seven thousand dollars because it's reporting stuff that they're, that the violation of. Well, this one particularly got attention and I, and you know, my first week here, when I moved down here. All of a sudden, EPA came out of Seattle. We had that December rain in two thousand and six that was huge. And they parked in my construction trailer for two weeks, going through every single record. They did the same thing at Tamarack. I got away with a slap on the hand for some record violations. Tamarack paid a fine of two hundred and some thousand because they had some. But that's the kind of, you know, they'll just show up and, and we anticipate that. This particular violation, uh, it's kind of uh, somebody that opposes us in Eagle annexation. Called the reporter and said, Avamore had a violation. You should, you know, go out and report on it, which she did, and she did a fair job, I think. Uh, and we did have a violation. I'll let Brad get into his particulars, but what it came down to is, you know, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on. Uh, stormwater because we move so much dirt. And the reporting is um very, you gotta report regularly. Um, when we signed up for our permit, you had to make a report, and it changes from time to time. Sometimes you can just say, I'm gonna report. Every time there is a rain event. Or, but we did, we had a private firm doing our inspections and we just elected to report uh weekly. Well, Spring Creek, because of the bu- uh pollutants in the Boise River, was upgraded from the ratings, you know. Because it feeds into the Boise River, and they decided now, if you had that permit, you had to report weekly. Plus a rain event over a quarter of an inch. Well, we did not have that for rain events, and that's mainly the fine because we did not report. There were fourteen violations. There were fourteen events that year of a quarter of an inch, and we did not have a report in our file, so. And that's kind of the bulk of it. I'll let Brad give you a little bore, but it, uh, there was no discharge into any stream. It was just reporting and um.
I've got, I've got a map here in front of me. Well, so the, they, so they.
By the Boise Airport.
And, and I, I'll pass a couple of those down to you. And so um, if, if you take, if you take the, the, the map and you can kind of look at a couple of different things that are, that are on here. So where we have our phase twelve, this final plot was just recorded a few months ago in front of, in front of you guys. That is the, kind of the location of where the inspections took place. And so this is prior to when we did the inspection on. Uh, January, I think it was January twenty, uh, twenty-first uh of twenty twenty-one. Um, the, the uh, uh EPA got a phone call at National, contacted DEQ. DEQ went and sent out their, the director to come out and meet with me, and that was actually the week prior. So he came out and said, hey, we've got a violation that we've been called in. We have to come out and do a walkthrough. We did. We walked all the way around the whole site. He noticed no violations. Um, and he said, thank you very much for, I mean, within fifteen minutes of him calling, we were on site. It was, it was quick. Um, so we did that walkthrough. Then a week later, um, the EPA got another phone call. Again, calls out IDQ. They came out, but this time they said, alright, we wanna go through all your records, you know, we don't. We don't appear anything off the front, but we wanna go through your records. And then they said, um, hey, from when you filed your NOI. The degradation of the stream has, has decreased. It went from a tier one to a tier three stream. And that changed, like Dan was saying, changed the requirements of how you do your inspections. And so normally, um, the EPA allows you, every two weeks you have to do an inspection, and then you have to do it at every rain event. Or you could just do every week, and then you didn't have to worry about the rain events on a typical project. But when you have an impaired water body, which, which they deem the creek now to be, then it changes it from every week to. Uh, every week plus a rain event after a quarter inch. And so. So our, our company, our third-party company wasn't doing those inspections. There was fourteen different rain events that took place.
Did you fire them?
We actually, so actually, yes, we actually kind of did. You know, they're, they're the largest soil erosion control company in, in the state. Um, and they work for everybody. Um, and so what we did was we said, you know, it's, it's so important to us, we'll hire an in-house person. So we've gone out and hired a, 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 a person actually from, kind of from them. That uh, all he does is our soil erosion control and does some construction management on, out on site.
They still put in the erosion control, you know, the, all of the things we do to, to keep water out, but our guy does the inspection.
Yeah, now we have control over, you know, we, we need to make sure that, you know, 'cause the way, the way this third-party company does it, everything is in the cloud. You know, so they do the inspections, goes up to the cloud. We didn't have physical books in front of us. Now we're back to the physical books. Because when the EPA shows up, or, or uh DEQ at this point, they say, alright, where are your books? Bring them to us, show us. And they just lay them out on, on the tailgate, and they literally go page to page, you know, and they have a calendar and they, and they look at the calendar. And, and that week between the, the two times they were called out, they were able to do some investigation on, you know, really what is. You know, what is the impaired water? Did, it shows that they're, they don't have any, but, you know, is there one? And so when they came back out, they were prepared that way. Um.
So is it, so Spring Creek here, this is Spring Creek, right?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about? That's been degraded to a level two?
Three, a level three, and that's because of the Boise River, so um.
Because that was changed there.
So the EPA rules changed um with the, with the new administration, back to what they kind of were before, where um. You, you have, if you have an impaired water body, which the Boise River is an impaired water body, then all the tributaries to that of Boise River uh become impaired. And so then they go to that next level. And so Dry Creek was impaired, you know, Dry Creek has gone to the next level. And Spring Creek, which is another tributary off of it, goes to that level, um, where we didn't have that before.
When did they downgrade the Boise River?
Oh, I, I, I don't know the exact date, um, but it's been a long, long time.
It's always been, the Boise River has always been the same. It's the tributaries, whether the tributaries are upgraded as well. And that, that was a, just an administrative decision um that President uh Trump reversed. That's back in effect now.
So when the, when the EPA um NOI, when we filed our NOI, it was not shown as an impaired water body. But after, so we're running on this, this permit, and the permit changed when it, when it was reverted. And, and the contractor didn't, didn't change that. So of our EPA violations that, that came out. Forty-two hundred of the fifty-two hundred dollars were specifically to the fourteen different missed violations. And then, and then, and then they, they, they ding you for, if you have a, any violation that's on the site, you automatically get a six hundred dollar fine. For that site, you know what I mean? So it's, it all became administrative. At no point did we have any discharge from our site. Um, they, they, they didn't document two gravel piles that were on the site, so then that was two violations um of, 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 of them. The gravel piles were just, were piled there and, and they just didn't show them on their site plan and identify them as gravel. Thus, it was a violation of, of not documenting all the materials that are on site, so.
Would you mind also, boy, we're, because we don't have you very often, address uh the shooting range? We're getting a lot of emails about. We're, at first we're like, is there one shooting range? Now there's two shooting ranges. What's going on?
Well, Eagles doing a shooting range right adjacent to us or trying to. We have a, but, right now, we have a shooting range. You know where um, you just put the sheriff's tower?
Oh, I haven't been able to see it.
Up on the roof or up on the uh, across the highway, the sheriff's just put a tower on our land.
So on your map, you can kind of see it, so that the shooting range is right here, and your tower is right here.
So right now, all of our people go over there, they're less, they're about a mile from a hundred and fifty of our homes.
There's three hundred, there's three thousand.
Or three, half a mile, they're three thousand feet from a hundred and fifty of our homes, and they shoot out there every day, and there's never any kind of people. But that's gonna go under development soon. So I told the people that. You know, shoot there regularly, not just our homeowners, but people come from in-town, that if they would get it approved as a nonprofit. And they would work with um the uh 4H, because 4H does all the hunter safety training, and if they would offer them. Free use of it, uh-huh, that I would give them the land. And here's where it is, and we did all of the engineering and all of that. Every, the fire department signed off, all of them did.
Where's that land?
Uh, just south of Pearl Road, way up north.
It's about, about four miles from here. Um, and it's, it's a.
Four miles to the side?
Yep, at the top of the hill.
That's the new site.
And the closest, the closest home, and there's only one home, is more than double the distance that we are from. The current range with the hundred and fifty homes living there.
It's eight thousand feet.
It's eight thousand feet, and there's a big mountain between it, you know, that, and so they're not gonna have an impact. And they claim that it's because of fire. Well, the fire department has already said that it's a safe environment we're creating. And what we're trying to stop, I don't know if you watched the TV thing when I was out there with the reporter. And all, since I've been there, we fight. Pearl Road is nothing. On a weekend, people just pull off, even though we've got signs there. No shooting without permission, no, they just pull off, they bring out their targets, which is the old refrigerator they gotta get rid of, or the old couch. And they dump their garbage, and there's just shooting everywhere. When we went out with the reporter to the site. Sure enough, somebody had been there and they dumped their garbage, and they'd been shooting, and they put their targets up in front of rocks. Now, and that's the kind of stuff we're trying to stop by putting them in a controlled environment, because they're out there and we can't stop it. And hopefully, they don't drop off their garbage. Many times, we'll find the garbage and they'll have plastic bags. We break them open, we find personal mail, and we call the sheriff and say. Yeah, this guy, yep.
Do you, Dan, do you want us to maybe forward any emails that we get in the future?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, because we don't, you know, we're not sure who's out there and, you know, what's going on, and just so you're aware that we're getting these.
And it's four miles into Boise County, too.
Okay, it's in Boise County.
Yeah.
Four miles into Boise County. Good to know.
And it's a place where everybody's shooting every weekend. We want a controlled environment. When the reporter was there, we walked up to the garbage. And there's all the garbage and a whole bunch of hypodermic needles laying there. Now, we have to clean all that crap up.
So, um, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Annie, would you in- instruct Hannah when she gets any emails that regard the shooting range? That she also just automatically forward them to Dan and Brad?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I haven't really, I don't think I've gotten any. I've gotten a bunch for the, the other one, the Eagle one, but uh, I don't think I've gotten any.
We did when the, at, when your, um, the media reporting first came out, we did, but it's quieted down since.
Well, and that was, uh, we went to the hearings on that kind of, and we're there, and they're all based, it was mostly like the equestrian users. Many were afraid that the guns were gonna go off, but some of the equestrian users say, no, we go to these equestrian events all the time. Near uh army bases, firing ranges, that, you know, the horses get used to it. But they were worried they were gonna lose their equestrian area because it's been nearest for years, well, it's Avamore.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it just so happens, it falls into our plans. We're doing two hundred acres there that will be an equestrian uh trailhead. Uh, with boarding and everything there, so it, it's always gonna be an equestrian area.
Well, good. Well?
Well, we just wanted to do our due diligence, you know, when it comes out in the paper, you know. You know, we just needed to check in with you guys to see if there's anything we needed to know about or anything we can help with, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, I'm talking to another reporter today about the water, and so that'll be in the paper, I'm sure, here.
How much did you get fined?
Pardon me?
Uh, did you get a fine from the violation?
Yeah, fifty, fifty-two hundred dollars.
What else do you expect uh when you have a quarter inch? What's the inspection involved?
Oh, you have to go out and inspect every single uh thing you have, every wattle, every kind of, it's, you have to do a report on it. It's, it takes a while to do these reports.
Well, it sounds like you're better set up now than you were.
Now you have your, all good.
Well, and it, and it was all, it was all just on how they, um, on how the frequency was, you know. And, and now it's reverted back. Now it's the state of Idaho, so that um, the state of Idaho has taken over primacy for the uh, the. Uh, from the EPA on, on soil erosion control. Now it is back to the once a week, that, that quarter inch doesn't kick in.
So.
Because it's the difference in state and the feds.
From feds to state, yeah.
So, so now it's back to the weekly um reports, so.
Well, that would seem more logical, actually, but.
Yeah, you know, it's uh, years ago, uh, on one of the inspections, what did we have? Uh. Oh, well, anyway, they all turn out kind of different, but uh, you know, sometimes uh. Doesn't matter, the paperwork is so much of it, they're gonna find errors in the paperwork.
Oh, yeah, sure.
What you were going to say was, is we had, we always, I always did them on Thursdays. I would always do my inspections on Thursdays. Thanksgiving came in and I did the inspection on Friday, and, and they, they.
That was a violation. It went eight days instead of seven.
Yeah, and they said, so you would have gone on Wednesday and then back to.
No turkey for you, Brad.
So it was, it was just one of those things. We learned from that, but.
Alright.
Well, keep the cinnamon loop, yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Keep the cinnamon loop on annexation.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, yeah.
And you, and uh, anyways, uh, we'll be in recess.